Good evening, folks. It's 7:00 PM, so I'm going to call the Board of Ed meeting to order on October 8th. And the first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. The next items on our agenda are approval of some minutes. And I would entertain a motion to approve the board retreat minutes for August 9th. And I know that Mary and I were just talking, we might like to make an amendment to a section of that, just to clarify something. But would somebody please make a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Katina. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Thank you. Mary, would you like to suggest clarification to that section on the superintendent evaluation process?
Well, I mean, any one of us could, but for the superintendent evaluation criteria part of the minutes, it should also include that the board was going to research their process that they have done in the last few years. It's not just the superintendent doing that.
So the superintendent and the board will be working on the evaluation tool and process? Is that acceptable to folks? Okay. Any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes, please indicate so by raising your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mia wasn't there. Yes, okay, thank you, Mia. Okay, now we're on to the minutes from the executive session on September 24th, 2025. I entertain a motion. Katina made a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. And also, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on September 24th.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula. Seconded by Katina. Yes, Mary?
Yeah, I have a comment because I believe the motion made about the donation was out of order because it contravenes board policy, and a motion cannot be made to contravene the policy. And it included actions that the board, I am not sure, is allowed to arrogate to itself.
Okay, Mary, I checked with legal counsel, and it was in the purview of the board to take the action that we took that evening on the frog. And also, it was clarified by her that we could have actually just given it away if we wanted to, too.
And the motion, if I may?
Go ahead, Katina.
Yeah, the motion was not to donate, but to relocate in a temporary basis with a plaque, "We are not giving up our ownership to the frog following policy."
Mary?
The board is a body, and we all had a right to see that decision.
It was a verbal conversation. I will get it in writing from our attorney. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the minutes from the September 24th meeting? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Now we're up to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none online or in person, we'll move on. I forgot to acknowledge at the beginning of the meeting that Ilda is here for part of the meeting. She has to go to work later, and Mark is here also. Thank you. I'm just writing down something. Okay, Board Chairs Report. First, I want to report to people, in case you didn't read it or follow it in any way, that the town and the Board of Ed budgets passed last Tuesday, September 30th. We gained about five votes in favor of the budget over the margin that it passed a year ago, was by 20 votes. I think this time it was by about 25 votes. It's really personally scary and disheartening that so few people know to go vote or care to go vote. But we can work on that over the next year, getting more information out to people in the school district before the cutoff time for communication about why it's important to vote on the Board of Ed and town budgets. The Board of Finance will be meeting next Wednesday at 7:00 PM, and I do plan on going there and reminding them that we need the gap in our budget of $161,000 so that we can move forward with some of the things that are at risk, such as middle school, sports, and clubs, and field trips. And if anybody wants to accompany me there next Wednesday at 7:00, they're welcome to do so. I want to remind folks that we do have a board retreat on our schedule for this year on November 7th and 8th. I would like to set aside time at our next board meeting to clarify with board members about the timing of that, and whether or not we want to start at what time on Friday, and start and end at what time on Saturday, whether or not we want to make it just a one-day retreat, how we want to deal with it. There have been some people that have said to me, and we don't have it on the agenda for discussion tonight, but I suppose we could amend the agenda. We, it's cutting it close because it's right after the elections, and we will have some people stepping off the board, and some new people who won't yet be sworn in. So some people have raised with me whether or not that's the right time to have a retreat. So let's all think about that, and I'd be happy to hear people's thoughts on that in the interim between now and the next week or so. Also, I want to report that, remind folks that the referendum on the elementary school consolidation is on the ballot on November 4th. And I just have seen the sample ballot in the past few days, and the question is there in Spanish and English. We are prohibited from using any Board of Ed resources to remind people about this issue and vote on it, but as board members, we are all free to use any of our own time and energy to talk to people about the elementary school consolidation proposal, and let people know that there are lots of answers to questions, frequently asked questions, and information about the proposed elementary school consolidation existing on the Board of Ed website. So it's, they're there. People can go look at that. I spoke to the Rotary Club this week. I've been on the radio twice, got invited to another radio show. I'm speaking to a few more clubs in the coming weeks. I encourage folks on the board to think about civic groups and clubs and associations that they belong to, and think about talking to folks about that issue. Also, the town is allowed to expend resources on letting voters know about this. So we are working in our volunteer time with representatives from the town to come up with a mailing that we're planning on having the town send out on its own dime to all the registered voters in town with information about this. So I think that there are some good things happening, but I encourage board members to continue to get out there and talk to people about this. And then finally, I want to say that there's been no movement on the decision that was made about the frog statue since the last meeting. We need to have some conversations about how the Sweeney School students can properly say goodbye to the frog, and how the town will take the responsibility to move the frog at the appropriate time, and also how private donations will be raised to put together the plaque that will go along with the frog, and the wording that will go along with the frog. So, the wording that will go on that plaque. And that's all that I have for my report, more than usual. Thanks, folks. We're on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to give you an update on my 90-day entry plan, and depending on when you started counting, and whether you count calendar days, or school days, or before I started on July 1st, that 90-day period varies, but we're around that time. So I just wanted to give you an update of all of the great things that have been occurring here in Wyndham Public Schools. So you can go on to the next slide, please. My first priority was really seeking to understand the community, and so I made it a point to listen to the community even prior to July 1st. I met and with a variety of stakeholders, with staff members, family members, students, member of the different bargaining units, as well as community partners. I also engaged with a variety of groups on reviewing academic attendance and school climate data. I also was able to facilitate the Board of Ed, the cabinet, and the leadership retreats. And we did all of that anchored in three readings or resources, which included the Opportunity Myth, the Opportunity Makers, and also Systems Thinking. And from all of that, which I still continue to do, because I pride myself in being open to listening and receiving feedback from my stakeholders, we have been able to identify three areas of focus for the district. One, very important for us to ensure that we're providing students standards-driven and on-grade-level, high-quality instruction, that students are coming to school every single day, and that they're engaged, and that we create environments for our students where they feel safe, included, welcomed, and loved by all of the, you know, teachers and staff. In terms of next steps, we're going to continue to monitor trends in attendance, student outcomes, and school climate. I'm going to continue to seek feedback from stakeholders. I'm really looking forward to launching the advisory boards, and as well as, we have started professional learning, our professional learning communities with our leaders, and I think that's another opportunity for us to receive some of the feedback. And we're using all of this information to also develop professional learning opportunities for all of our staff that are aligned with our priorities. You can go on to the next slide, please. The second priority is really starting to build relationships with individuals to make sure that we're enforcing trust and transparency. So I have been and continue to be very visible, and, you know, not only in our schools, but also out in the community. I have developed a variety of ways that I communicate with the staff, with the board, as well as the leaders in the district. As you know, I have Sunday communications that I send out to all of the stakeholders. I hold weekly, bi-weekly meetings with all of the leaders, and I visit schools on a regular basis. I'm also almost done with my first edition of the Wyndham Connection newsletter. I am translating it, and it will be going out next, this upcoming Monday or Tuesday. And I continue to meet with and learn about all of the great collaborations that we have with community partners, and so that we can continue to strengthen those. In terms of next steps, I'm going to be convening the advisory boards probably in November. And I continue to maintain my visibility. I have an engagement calendar, not only of school events and community events that I really, truly enjoy following, so to continue to learn from the community, and so that they know who their superintendent is, and that I'm very proud of this community, and I am here if they ever, you know, want to approach me in any of these situations. So the third priority, you can go on to the next slide. Assessing strengths and growth areas. We were able to, in my opinion, develop coherence really early on with the meetings and the leadership retreats with the board, the cabinet, the leaders. And, but we have been guiding our decisions by taking a look at data. So, for instance, this past Wednesday, we started with, last Wednesday, we worked with our leaders across the district to look at our student performance data, and to draft student impact and staff learning goals that are aligned with not only our areas of focus, but also with our leader and education evaluation plan. And that allows us then to be aligned between the board, the cabinet, the leadership, and now the rest of the staff. We are going to, actually, our principals are going to be tracking the same experience with our staff on today's Wednesday, on Friday. We're aligning our PLCs with the district priorities and leader needs. In terms of next steps, we're going to conduct, of course, mid-year reflections to see how we're doing, what progress we're making, and if we need to make any additional, if we need to make any adjustments. And it is my goal to refine professional learning based on the data and stakeholder input. So you can go on to the next slide. And in terms of priority four, it was refining our priorities, action planning and executing. Again, I feel like we have a unified direction, and we are starting to really have a strong alignment from, like I mentioned previously, the board, the cabinet, the leadership team, and now the rest of the staff. We're going to continue to monitor and hold ourselves accountable. It is, you know, shared accountability. So we'll continue to do that throughout the year. In terms of next steps, as I mentioned, we have a district-wide goal-setting PD on October 10th. We, all of the staff are going to be utilizing a structured reflection protocol to dig deep into the data and really think about what is it that, how they want to contribute to our priorities, what is the student learning or student impact that they want to see, and then what does that mean for them as educators, and what is it, what learning they're going to engage in throughout the year. And we'll reflect mid-year and continue to monitor and adjust as needed, but always looking at all of our data. We are a data-rich district. And I believe that is it. I will pause for any questions, comments about my entry plan.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, no, I think you've been pretty good at communicating with us all throughout the process, and based on our conversation at the retreat, I think it's been pretty clear what we've been watching for and hearing from you about, so, hearing about from you. So unless anybody else has any questions or comments. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is committee reports, but the School Planning and Design Committee was canceled last night, from yesterday.
We met, well, some of us met.
School Planning and Design?
Yeah, Policy that night was canceled.
Oh, Policy. Okay. Sorry, I got mixed up.
No worries. No worries, thanks. Thank you. So unfortunately, most of the committee was absent. It was me, Mr. Harris, Dr. Gomero, and Mr. Dolphin who attended. So we held on the minutes since there was not a quorum. Mr. Harris gave us an update of various goings-on within facilities at the moment. Materials from Wyndham Center being redistributed. The grounds department is now fully staffed and is sharing responsibilities throughout the district. A few other smaller projects at North Wyndham, Barrows, and Sweeney that are in the works, mostly HVAC-related, trying to make sure we're all set for winter. The full details will be in the minutes there, but we just got a quick update on those items that are in progress, and we'll be in touch next month.
Does anybody have any questions? Mary?
I just have a comment. There was an ad hoc high school meeting at the same time, so I couldn't go to both.
No worries.
Anything else? Thank you, Mary, for sitting on that committee. This is an aside, it's been going on for many, many years. Must be wrapping up soon, I would think. Hopefully.
That's what we thought when we scheduled these, and they keep conflicting.
Yeah, okay. Okay, then that's it. If nobody has any questions for Brendan, thank you, everybody, for all your work on that front. And we're on to data review and goal-setting process. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Gomero.
Thank you. This is really the fun part of my job, you know, getting to discuss, you know, student learning, progress, and all of the great things that are happening in our district. And so you can go on to the next slide, please. So we're going to be sharing with you some achievement data from the Smarter Balance Assessment. The board had seen preliminary data over the summer, and this is the official data that was presented or reported by the state. We have much to celebrate. I'm going to call Neil Weathers to come up and speak on behalf of the district, because I want to give him the opportunity to celebrate all of the great things that his team, prior to me coming on board, was able to accomplish. So, thank you, Neil.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So there's basically five slides we're going to share, and there is a lot to celebrate that occurred in the last year, and the staff and the whole team was, obviously, it was a transitional year for the district. So the fact that we're seeing this progress really speaks to their efforts and the students, so it is overall something to celebrate. So the very first couple of slides speak to what we call Performance Index, and/or sometimes we refer to as SPI for School Performance Index, or District Performance Index. And that reports the information instead of levels. In the past, you'd often see this percentage of students who are meeting Level 3 or Level 4. This presents it in a way that is from an index of 0, being the lowest possible score, to 110, being the highest possible score, regardless of what assessment you took. So the preliminary data that the board saw in late summer was all Smarter Balanced Assessments, but here, when you look at whether it's Wyndham Public Schools, or the state, or a school, it combines different assessments. So it combines also the indexes of, or indices of students that took the alternative special ed assessments, where, for example, when you look at the high school, even though that factors into Wyndham Public Schools index, that includes the SAT results. So it's multiple assessments being configured at the same time. So what you'll see, just the quick summary, is that if you look at our index score of 55.1, you could see that is an increase from the previous year, and three years out. And one of the things I did want to celebrate is, I just, this is actually, I'm celebrating something I just looked up a few minutes ago, but if you take all the, about 160 to 170 districts in the state of Connecticut, our increase in achievement is in the top quartile of all the districts over the last three years, so meaning the increase from where it was in 2022 to where it is now in 2025. So that's, again, sustained effort by the staff and students, and I just wanted to celebrate that. I don't know if anyone has any questions, particularly on this slide.
Anybody have any questions on this slide? I have just a clarifying question.
Sure.
On, you said you looked at the statewide data, and our increases are in the top quartile.
For this measure over three years.
For this measure over three years. And that's among all the districts?
All districts in the state.
Not just in our DURG?
Correct.
Okay.
All 170.
Very, very good.
And then, next slide, please. So Math Performance Index. We see another increase from 50 to 51.3, and we can see that we're about five, you know, somewhere in the vicinity of 4.4 points higher than we were three years ago. And you could see the increase is there, and then obviously, the state information is there for reference. Also, just happens that we're in the top quartile as well, in three-year gains.
Is Marie still here? Marie still here?
Ilda, are you talking to us or to somebody in your household? Make sure you mute.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Neil.
Okay, so I don't know if anyone has any questions on this particular slide. Okay, next slide, please. Now, this is really pretty exciting. So for our science data, you can see that we had a, you know, an increase there as well, and then we're up about four points from three years ago. Very interesting here, when you look at some of the change, some of our change here has been pretty significant. And again, we're much higher than we were several years ago compared to other districts, meaning the gain of achievement. Obviously, our overall achievement, we have worked to go, but our increase compared to three years ago is much greater than many other districts. And one thing of note, if you look, Barrows and Wyndham Center last year, actually, their indices for schools actually were above the state average, and that's to me, something of note, and a positive note.
Brendan?
Am I reading this correctly, that for our high-need students, we're above the state average as well?
When you compare the high-needs of state students compared to ours, we do have a higher index that is correct.
Excellent.
Yeah, and obviously, we have a much higher percentage of our district than the state. The state is about 50% now, and we're well over 80%.
I was just thinking that, given what, sometimes the perception is about how our schools are doing, it is worth us doing a press release of some sort and to get out the word in the community. It probably is going to be in the newsletter, too, I would guess, that Dr. Gomero is thinking of doing. But there are some schools in, like, one particular school, I'm seeing that all of these is not doing as well as some of the others, and I'm sure we're probably trying to figure that out, what's going on.
So one thing I'll say, regardless of school, when you get this data, some of the things that I think might come up in some future slides or discussions, and some of the points that Dr. Gomero is making, in any set of data, when you're really digging in deep, there are strengths and areas for growth, and at each of the schools, and within the cabinet and the leadership team, we've already been exploring and taking action on the data that has existed. I think, I believe, Dr. Gomero is in her second week, and we are already forming action plans for some of the things that we're seeing up here. So that is all taking place, and it's actually very aligned with the October 10th Professional Development Day, which is about goal-setting and looking at this information. We're giving, obviously, whole view, big-picture information, but the teachers will have access to individual student data to but the teachers will have access to individual student data to really dig into when they're doing their goal-setting. Any other questions? All right. Next slide. All right. This is our growth data, and this is slightly different. Actually, this is one measure that I actually like looking at, especially when we look across classrooms and look across schools, because it speaks to regardless of where a student is in their achievement, whether they arrived to us this year or last year, or whether they've been with us for several years, or where their test was the previous year. It shows, are they moving? Is their achievement level increasing from the previous year? And are we making gains with that student? So each year, a student takes one of the assessments in Smarter Balance or an alternative assessment. They are given a growth target that is assigned by the state of Connecticut, and they can gain from 0 to 110% of that target. So here, you're looking at what the schools and the state and we did in terms of growth. You could see some variance among the schools. This is our ELA growth. And one of the activities we actually looked at recently was we looked at growth in ELA in Grade 5 as a leadership team. And we were looking, you see some interesting things that happen that occur here. So it's pretty exciting to be able to dig into that. But here, we're making movement. Just ultimately, we'd like to see, you know, in the closer to the high 60s, 70s on a consistent basis at all our schools. Any questions?
My, am I understanding correctly that the ELA, our ELA students in 2025 rated higher than the ELA students rate in the state overall?
Oh, if you're talking high needs, yeah. We had greater high-needs growth and high-needs growth in the state. That is accurate.
That's excellent also.
By 5.5%. Next slide. Okay, math growth. You can see we actually had one of our districts hit 70%, one of our schools, excuse me, hit 70%. And you could see that where we are, and again, where we are compared to the state and where we have been over time. And we look very carefully at this. One of the things we're trying to do, there's places in the district where we had, we actually had one classroom in Grade 5 in particular where the growth was in, I think it was 99.8%, which is phenomenally high and rare. And what we're trying to do is replicate where we're seeing success. Why is that happening? And with that teacher, that's actually happened for a couple of years in a row. So we're trying to replicate success. And then, one thing while we're on math growth, one of the neat things, without naming individual staff members, obviously, but one of the little gems that we really, I enjoyed discovering is one of our docerios classes in Grade 5 had the highest achievement and highest growth in the district. And that's obviously a classroom full that were all students, our English learners. So that was really exciting to see for all of our Grade 5 in the district. Any other questions? I have one more slide, I believe. This is just something typically we don't do, but knowing that during the budget cycle, sometimes people were talking about through narrative rather than data or information, how we perform versus other districts. And this is just a case of where our district, including all our grades 3 to 8 and Grade 11, are outperforming in ELA and math. And you can see in a much greater number, science. Obviously, year in and year out, we are the highest in Derg-I. But when you especially look at science, there are some Derg-G and H districts in there. And some, there's actually a few districts that are not even Alliance districts. So I just wanted to share that success. And obviously, just as an educator, I root for all of them to do better, too, because we want all students to succeed. But I just, when people make anecdotal comments, I like to refute those with data and just show that we are succeeding and making progress in places that other people still are working on. I don't know if anyone has any other questions, but that's.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Katina.
Besides the press release and the letter, can we tell the kids? Like, can we say, look how good you're doing in comparison to the rest of the state and do little celebrations in the different schools?
So at schools, it varies how we convey the information, but we do try to share success. Some of it is timely, like, because it's being reported out in June, so like, the cohorts change. But there are schools that sort of share that information if it's available. Yeah, they, yes, because they're the ones performing, correct. Thank you.
I know that there's a lot for people to absorb here, and hopefully, we can unpack more of it at future meetings about how we're working to replicate what's, like, some maybe anecdotal-type examples for the board to understand better how we're working at replicating place, you know, things that are going well and doing well in classrooms or in schools across the district.
Yes. And the one thing I'm going to say is, when it comes to data, our superintendent always has questions in looking at data in different ways and making what I find to be really good insights to probing next steps and questions. What we did hear is, we gave you a small piece of information, even though it's a lot to absorb. There's actually other data sets, you know, actually the secondary level that we could start sharing, but we didn't want to do like an overload. And then, so unpacking, if you have questions, we'll do our best to get you the answers.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions or things they'd like to know more about, maybe not tonight, but in the future? Dr. Gomero, is there anything you want to say to?
I'm just very proud of the accomplishments of not only the interim team. I think this is a demonstration that you continue to lead in the district and all of the hard work of the teachers and the students to be able to accomplish this. So congratulations, and I'm looking forward to continue to build upon our successes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ben?
Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I welcome the good news. Can you go back the last three slides, Neil? That one, and another one? And one more? Yeah. My concern, and I don't want to pick on any one thing, because overall, I think it's great news that we're improving, but I'm kind of see a kind of disturbing trend going on here at Sweeney, where in those last three slides, they've taken a major deficit as opposed to everyone else. So I'm hoping we can focus some attention here on Sweeney as to what's going on in that particular school.
And I don't know if Dr. Gomero wants to add, but that's already being addressed. As the data came in, that information has been shared with the school. We are working on it. And that will, part of the PD that will be happening on Friday is about goal-setting and moving forward to improve the scores that you're seeing there. The only one thing, and I always like to be careful of, because the data is pretty clear there, just when you have smaller schools where the test size is 100, and we've seen this in some of the smaller schools over the 10 years I've been doing this, you can see some dramatic shifts from year to year because a student is, like, basically represents 1% or in some cases, depending what it is, 2% of a measure. But obviously, the data here is pretty clear that we're, and we're looking at it and addressing it.
Yeah, the rest of the data looks good, but it is pretty clear that there's something happening at Sweeney that they're not performing at the same level as the other schools.
Mark, you may remember, we talked about this at the retreat in August because we looked at the preliminary data together then and raised concern with Dr. Gomero, and she assured us that the district was working on this. And it'll be interesting to see what happens this year because we're bringing the students from Wyndham Center School to North Wyndham and Sweeney. So the numbers will be greater in those schools, so it won't be 100 students or 109 students being tested in Sweeney. It'll be a bigger group.
Yeah, yes. One of the things that will be interesting, we are going, when we look at this data, there's going to be some potential accountability index and shifts in these numbers just because of the changes and the transitions we had. For example, science won't be measured at the three elementary schools anymore. It'll be taught, like, in the grade levels, but that assessment will take place in Grade 5 at the middle school in Barrows, and Grade 8 at, you know, Barrows and the middle school. So that will have, that'll have numerical consequences, I guess, but won't necessarily change anything. It just might be looking different when we look at school indices, and we'll have to be careful that we're not making false conclusions based on those shifts. But that'll be next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? I encourage you, if you think about this data or look at it after this meeting, and you have things to raise them with me, you know, Dr. Gomero and CC me, so that we can make sure we figure out ways to address any further learning or discussion at the board level. Okay, thank you very much, Neil. It's nice to see you give us the data. It's your thing.
We'll continue reviewing other data sources. If you can go on to the next slide. And before we continue, I also want to highlight that I've been in conversation with the principal at Sweeney, Ms. Firth. And she not only has been very responsive or very proactive in engaging her staff in the discussion about their data. They want to make sure that, you know, they are taking ownership of it. She wants to ensure also that they don't feel defeated, because this is something that is difficult sometimes to engage in that conversation. But our union president for the teachers is here tonight, and she can attest to the conversations that are already happening in the school about what is it that we need to do to improve student performance? So I just want to make sure that everyone hears that, you know, the principal is on board in already having those conversations. And I'll share later on what is it that we're engaging in this Friday. So we also have tons to celebrate when it comes to our attendance. This is one of our areas that we've been focusing in because we need to ensure that all of our students are in school every day. And so we have some, if we look at our data compared to last year, at the end of September, we are seeing some improvement, especially at the high school. We have seen a decrease on student chronic absenteeism by over 8%. At Nachhok, they continue to make improvement of over two percentage points, as well as Sweeney and the middle school. Our attendance rate, weekly attendance rate is at 94%, and we have almost half of our students who are currently have perfect attendance. And so we continue, as you have seen in my weekly emails, we continue to monitor how we're doing. Our staff members have been very receptive and open and very focused on ensuring that they're communicating with home, that parents know the importance of coming, having their kids come to school, identifying any barriers that may be getting in the way, and then thinking about outside of the box, how is it that we're supporting our families so the students can be in school? And so this is something that we should definitely continue to celebrate, and I hope that our trend of improvement continues. I'll pause to see if there's any questions or comments.
Okay, we can keep moving. I don't see any.
Thank you. And if you can go on to the next slide, I've been mentioning throughout the presentation today that the cabinet, as well as all of the leaders in the district, and this Friday, our certified staff will be engaging and have engaged in goal-setting. I consider this to be one of the most critical components of ensuring that we are continuing to improve as a district. It requires for us to pause, to look at the data from a variety of angles, to look deep into the data, not only at the district level, but by school, by teacher, and by student, and to identify how each one of us is going to contribute to improving student outcomes. Based on that, teachers and support staff on Friday are going to identify a one goal that is targeting student improvement, as well as a learning goal for them, a professional learning goal. Because if we think, for instance, if we see that we need to increase student performance in the ELA assessment, and we think that we should be implementing certain reading strategies in the classroom, I, as an individual, as an educator, may need to engage in some learning about what are the best strategies? How do I implement it? How do I know if they're working or not? And how do I make adjustments to my instruction based on the data throughout the year? And so we are starting on Friday by looking at the data, identifying where is it that we want to make impact? What is it that I need to learn as a professional and as an educator? And how is it that I'm going to track improvement for the rest of the year? And so everyone in the district is going to be engaging in that exercise, which is going to be led by our principals. They engage, as you can see in that picture, they engaged in this process last week. And with anything that is new, we are continuing to adjust based on the feedback that we get from administrators. And after this experience on Friday, we may continue to adjust then based on feedback that we receive from our educators across the district. In terms of next steps, we're going to continue to review and calibrate goals, and we're going to monitor outcomes and revise action plan and execute as needed, but based on the data. And we know that there's not only one set of data that we have available to us in Wyndham. So we want to make sure that we're looking at the whole child, not only Smarter Balance data. And so that is something that we also want to highlight. If you have any questions, comments? All right. If you can go to the next slide, I believe that was the last of my items to discuss. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments, questions? Thank you very much for presenting that to us. And again, if people want to hear more about this, we can always set aside time to have a working session at a board meeting or a special meeting. I think we'll probably be very interested in hearing how things are going, you know, after we get through the first quarter, third of the year, certainly after October, when you've had a chance to have these discussions. If there's anything noteworthy to report. Absolutely. Okay. Now we're on to action items, and the only three action items we have on the agenda this evening is a continuation of what we had a report on at the last board meeting is action on these policies. Katina, you look like you're jumping out of your skin.
Because I just make sure that they were all, all the action items for tonight were clearly stated on our minutes that we approved tonight between pages 15 and 20. That's where the policies were cited. So just for everybody, if they want to refer back and reread what was in the minutes, they can. Thank you.
Right. We did discuss it, but go ahead, Brendan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we did discuss this at the last meeting, but these are mostly based off of statutory changes in Connecticut state law that require us to update some of these policies to be current with the law, as well as, you know, these have all been reviewed by our legal counsel and recommended for us to take these actions.
I just then would entertain. I just then would entertain a motion, do we want to take them separately or together? They're all repeals. Well, repeal and replace. Yeah, they're all repeal and replace. So, does somebody want to make a motion to entertain all three at once or separately? It's up to you.
I'll make a motion that we take all three together.
Okay, items 9, A, B, and C then. Who would like to second the motion made by Paula?
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Are, is there any discussion or questions that people have? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Okay, now we're on to public comment. Is there anybody who wants to speak?
We still have to vote to repeal or not.
That's right. Thank you, Mary. Sorry. Okay, so we made a motion to put them all together. Now, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan, seconded by Katina. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, motion carries. Now, we're done with the action items and we're on to public comment. Mary?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment where, to reiterate that I would like to see the lawyer's opinion. And I would also like a record of the date when you had the oral discussion.
Well, I'll request that. Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:52.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned.